Hey there. Want to make your voice heard at a Board of Supervisors meeting? We're all ears. Here's how you can get involved. First, hop online and look at the agendas. This will give you the scoop on what's coming up before the Board. Each agenda item includes a brief description of the issue, the recommendations, and potential impacts. If you need more detail, check out the detailed reports online. Those are called "Board Letters." Then decide if you want to speak at Tuesday's General Legislative Session or Wednesday's Land Use Session. You'll have three opportunities to have your say. Let's start with non-agenda public comment. This is your chance to talk about things that aren't on the agenda, but try and keep your topic related to county government. For non-agenda public comments, you can speak at either the Tuesday or Wednesday session, but not both. So pick your day accordingly. And keep in mind, the Board can't act on the spot. They'll refer your comments to the Chief Administrative Officer, who will look into the issue. Last thing. The Board will hear from the first 10 speakers, five in person and five by phone at the beginning of the session. Then all the remaining speakers will get their chance to speak after the discussion items. During the consent agenda, the Board handles a bunch of routine items with one vote. If you want to comment on an item, keep it simple. For example, I'm John Doe, speaking on item 5, and I agree with approving the contract. Discussion items are the main event where the Board debates before making a decision. Want to speak at one of the meetings? It's really easy. Just hop online and fill out a quick request form at publiccomment.sandiegocounty.gov. Pick the meeting you're interested in, hit the register button, then fill in your details. Make sure to include a phone number if you plan on speaking by phone. Prefer speaking at the podium in the board chamber? No problem. Just pick the in-person option. After that, just check off the agenda items you want to talk about and let them know you're for, against, or neutral on them. Hit register, and you're good to go. A confirmation email will land in your inbox to wrap it up. If you're speaking by phone, the email will include the instructions for how to dial in. Be sure to submit your request early. Once public comment begins on the agenda item, we can't take any more requests to speak. And if you have documents, hand them to the deputy clerk when it's your turn to speak at the podium. Now, you get two minutes to speak, but if lots of people want to talk, it might get cut to one minute. So you might want to consider writing two sets of comments, one for two minutes, another one for one. That way, if time's cut, you won't be scrambling. There's also a countdown clock at the podium to keep you on track. Once you're at the podium, stay on topic. Stick to the current agenda item. If you stray off topic, you might get a gentle nudge to get back to the point. Keep your comments related to the agenda items' recommendations because that's what the Board is relying on to make a decision. Also, speak directly to the Board. They're the ones making the decision. When your time's up, it's up. Overstaying might mean getting muted or even asked to leave. Now for some ground rules. For safety, keep aisles and doorways clear. If there isn't a seat, head across the hall to Room 302 or the fourth-floor balcony to watch the meeting. Respect is huge. Everyone should feel heard. That means you, other speakers, and the Board of Supervisors. Disruptive behavior gets one warning, and after that, a deputy sheriff might show you the door. So let's keep it respectful. Your voice matters, and we want to hear from you. Remember, we're all here to make a difference.
Good morning, everyone. I will now call the November 5th, 2025 San Diego County Board of Supervisors Land Use Legislative Session and Housing Authority Meeting to order. Ryan, please call the roll for today's session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp. Tenet Commissioner Higgins? Supervisor Anderson? Supervisor Desmond? Chair Proton McGarry? Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp? And the chair let us know she is under the weather and will not be participating in today's proceedings.
Thank you so much for that. And so before we begin this meeting, I want to take a moment to address some House rules. Public engagement is the cornerstone of transparency and accountable government, and these Board of Supervisors meetings are one of the primary venues where all San Diegans can make their voices heard. The county is committed to a work environment free from unlawful discrimination and harassment, including sexual, racial, religious, age, disability, or any other form of discrimination or harassment. Under the Board's rules, speakers are not allowed to use loud, shouting, threatening, impertinent, slanderous, profane, or abusive language to any member of the Board's staff or the general public. Additionally, all remarks and questions must remain on topic during the duration of your speaking time and must be addressed to the Board and not to county staff. Any speaker who engages in comments that break these rules will be issued a warning. After one warning, you will be asked to leave the chambers for the rest of the meeting. Finally, speakers threatening violence may be reported to law enforcement and removed from the chambers. This is a space for community engagement, deliberation, and progress, not for harassment, violence, and hate. So with that, we will now proceed with non-agenda public communication. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Board on subject matters within the Board's jurisdiction, but not an item that is on the meeting agenda. The only action that the Board may take is to refer the issue to the Chief Administrative Officer. Under the Board's rules, speakers can only speak once per meeting for non-agenda public communication, either at yesterday's General Legislative Session or today's Land Use Legislative Session, but not both sessions. Speakers may select which session to address the Board at their own convenience. And to better facilitate the meeting for non-agenda public comment, we will have five speakers in person, five speakers by phone. The rest of the non-agenda public communication will be heard at the close of today's session. Additionally, in accordance with Board rules, in order to ensure timely completion of today's agenda, for any discussion item with 10 or more speakers, individuals will have one or more, one minute to share their opinion at the chair's discretion. And a reminder that according to Rule 4A, members of the public that are non-English speaking and need interpretation assistance will get twice the allotted time for their comments. According to the Board's Rules of Procedures, audience members shall not whistle, clap, stomp feet, or anything that disrupts the proceedings. We encourage people to show their support by waving their hands or thumbs up. Nonverbal communication. If you disrupt the meeting, you will be given a one-minute warning. And then after that, one warning. If you disrupt the meeting again, you will be directed to leave the chamber for the remainder of the meeting. Ryan, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp. Before we go to non-agenda public comment, we'll turn over to County Council for a closed-session report and then go to non-agenda.
Yes. The Board of Supervisors met in closed session on November 4th, 2025, from 4:41 PM to 5:09 PM. All Board members were present. The Board took no reportable actions. End of report.
All right. Thank you. We will now go to non-agenda public comment. We do have 28 requests to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, two individuals in person, and 26 requests to speak by phone. For those that were requested to speak by phone, please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speakers. As your name is called, if you could please come forward and stand on the arrows until it is your turn to speak at the podium, you'll then have two minutes to address the Board. And if you could please begin by saying your name for the audio record. I'd like to invite forward Dorthea Flanagan and Robert Gorman.
Good morning. I'm Dorthea Flanagan. For the past month, I've been analyzing what's going on in North San Diego County because it affects us badly up there. You really don't have much of a code compliance or ordinance enforcement department. I see that you've outsourced it out of state as far as Georgia and Oklahoma, some of these people answering the phone. They act like they don't know where California is. I called about this. These are billboards four feet by four feet, half-inch thick, stuck in the right-of-way of Route 76. The speaker said to me, "Are you in Nevada or California?" Thank you. I asked to speak with the supervisor. Never got a call back, of course. These are lined up from a mile away. Four of them on Route 76. I've gone every avenue to get rid of these people with thick stakes, or they mount them on the speed limit signs. If you call the sheriff, they will go out or they won't go out, depending on how busy they are. This needs to stop. They're in the way. They're right next to the pavement. Car's doing 60 miles an hour to lead up to a vendor's stand. And it even says on here, "One mile ahead." I didn't take all the pictures because there's too many of them on Gopher Canyon Road and Route 76, tied to the speed limit signs. They tell them to quit it, and the next day, they're back.
This is exactly why you don't have a one-runway international airport. One little business jet had a landing gear failure, shut down the whole international airport. It's ridiculous. And I wish, please, read the comments on YouTube from this. I also have a change of topic. I apologize for the paper, but this, to me, is really important and answers a lot of questions, Phil, so. This is from Senator Christine Kehoe and Assemblymember George, and I'm going to butcher this, Pulaski. "The Regional Airport Authority, is it working for San Diego?" I just took a couple of clips out of it. I put them in red boxes. "San Diego is the only county in the state where an Airport Operations Board is designated as ALUC." Senator Kehoe. Now, this is a long time ago, but these still are the same issues. Senator Kehoe began by observing that this hearing is not the first time that members of the San Diego State delegation have had a discussion with members of the Airport Authority, Board of Airport. After the March 25 draft, ALUCP was released. The senator and assemblyman in the San Diego State delegation heard almost immediately from local elected officials, city managers, the military, community planners, and local and regional planners. The message was consistent. There was a disconnect and a lack of communication between the authority and local government and the military. Senator Ducheney convened a meeting between the members' use encroachment, the realist-- I get glare off the side. Anyway, you get the idea. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, in accordance with the Board's rules, we'll be hearing from the first five callers. Remaining callers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we'll go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello? Can you hear? Okay. Nobody responded quite right away, so I hope you start the clock again. Four horses. My name is Michelle, and I'm calling because four horses have died under the watch of the county Board of Supervisors. Four horses. How many more horses have to die before the county supervisors take action, interfere, and protect the others that are living in filth on Deborah Barclay's ranch? How many horses have to die till you take action? Dogs also remain at the county animal shelter living in inhuman conditions. Failure, once again, to provide basic welfare conditions are unacceptable. And Assistant Director Rachel Brawley, believe it or not, is suspended because she was on TV saying that the dogs at the shelter are shit dogs. Yes, she said it on TV. They are shit dogs, and they should be euthanized. This is so unprofessional. I demand she be fired now. Taxpayers are paying her income while being forced on leave for her comments about shit dogs. We vote for you, Board of Supervisors. We need you to take action against both the animal shelter dog condition and the horses on Deborah Barclay's ranch. I demand, and I want this on record, I demand Rachel Brawley and Tara Lawson Reamer to be fired for not doing their job. What more must happen before justice is done? I want my comment recorded that Board of Supervisors are not doing their job either. Why are you allowing animal abuse to go on? It's over two years now. Why? We vote for you to help us, and nobody's helping us. Why are you neglecting the abuse going on? How could--
Minute's up. We'll go to our next caller.
Hi. I'm Paul Bowles. I wasn't actually scheduled to speak on agenda. Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Yeah. I wasn't actually scheduled to speak, but let's see. I do have the non-agenda I gave yesterday, if you want. Do you want me to repeat that? Hello? Ryan? Can you hear me?
Oh, there we are. Okay.
You can still hear me? Okay. My first concern was that yesterday, Tara said something about not using impertinent language, but I'm not sure what that exactly meant. Does it mean like rude or whatever language, like little kid? Or does it simply mean on, off-topic? I mean, you know, it's kind of ridiculous to put something like that in a cautionary legal speech. And I'm glad it'd be the last meeting. Didn't have to be this meeting. Any items from the last meeting, rather.
Paul, you're--
Hello?
Hi.
People.
Yeah.
Anyway--
Paul, your time is-- Hi, Paul. Your time is-- There we go. Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Everyone, we're having some technical difficulties. We're going to take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me?
By the way, we can hear you. Sorry. We're having technical difficulties, so we're in a recess right now. So just give us a minute, and then we'll call on you.
Hello? It's saying, "Wait a minute, and then we'll call on you," or something.
Oh, hi. Good morning.
Hi, Christina.
My name is Christina Koo.
Hi there.
Can you--
Yes.
Hi there.
Yes. If you could just give us a second. We are having technical difficulties with our call-in system. We were just--
Oh, sure, sure. Please, sure. Just let me know. Thank you.
Will do. Thank you so much. Just hold tight, and I'll let you know when to begin your comments.
Okay. Let's reconvene and go back to public comment. I think we are okay, but everyone, please stand by in case we need you. Please proceed.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We will now call on Christina. I'll bring you back up.
Hi. My name is Christina Koo. I'm a California attorney, and I've been apprised of some situations in San Diego County regarding the animals and horses and the artisanal property. Now, I do some pro bono work for, you know, local folks on animal welfare issues. And I guess I also have some questions and seeing if there's someone that I can speak further about on detail about the situation. I heard an earlier caller pretty much details some of the things that are going on. And I think some other callers who may be on this call are just really perplexed with inability to get some responses. And please understand that a lot of these folks, who are really compassionate people, do care about animals and humans and our environment. And I think the main point is that, you know, I also feel that folks can call in and make public comments, but we feel a responsibility to speak for those who cannot talk, obviously cannot get on the calls, to let everyone know what's happening to them. And yes, you know, horses continue to die. We're not sure why. There's not been any kind of investigation. So that's the main question. And I have heard for many years now residents have reported the animal neglect to the county supervisors. And so the second question is, when may these folks get some kind of a response on their report? And mostly, there's been some transparency issues?
Thank you. Your time is up, and we'll go to the next caller.
Hello. This is Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator with a focus on youth substance use prevention. I would like to share some important new findings about the use of nicotine vaping products by teenagers that were published this week by JAMA, the Journal of the American Medical Association. Among teenagers who vape nicotine, the rate of those who vape-- Among teenagers who vape nicotine, the rate of those who vape daily has increased substantially. A higher number of teens also made unsuccessful attempts to quit. The JAMA study included more than 15,000 teens. Of those who use e-cigarettes, the rate of those who vape every single day rose from about 15% in 2020 to nearly 29% last year. That's almost double the rate of daily nicotine use in just a few years. In addition, more than half of these teens reported trying to quit last year without success. Numerous studies demonstrate that vaping is harmful to the mental and physical health of teens. For example, a 2024 study in the Tobacco Control Journal showed that teens who vape frequently have increased levels of lead and uranium in their urine. The amount of nicotine in today's popular devices far exceeds that of traditional cigarettes. And the liquid nicotine salts that are used are absorbed more easily into the bloodstream. Here is a quote from an online vape retailer. Salt-based nicotine is typically less harsh to vape, which allows for better tolerance of higher nic-salt e-juice. It's no wonder more teens are going from occasional use to daily use and struggling to break the habit. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller. Next caller is, I believe it's Susanna Alexander. You may need to unmute your phone, Susanna. Okay, we'll come back to you.
Laurie Palladino, non-agenda public comment.
You can, you can begin your comments.
Good morning. My name is Laurie Palladino. I would like to start my comments today by saying, in these difficult and challenging times, we need to exercise more compassion and empathy with every opportunity to do so. I am calling in again to speak to animal cruelty and neglect on Artesian Road. Another horse has died on Artesian Road this past August. This is the fourth horse to die under Supervisor Tara Lawson Remers' watch. This is unacceptable. We are asking again, how many more animals must suffer and subsequently die before the county intervenes and removes every animal from this property? Activists and residents alike have reported cruelty and neglect tied to this same property. Nothing has changed. The county's ongoing inaction has allowed this horrific suffering to continue. Are you aware dogs remain in inhumane conditions at the county shelter? It's awful. Overcrowding, the failure to provide basic welfare standards continue. This is a violation of the county's duty to protect animals in its care. More egregious still is the fact these failures are not isolated incidents. They represent systemic neglect and a failure of leadership within the Department of Animal Services. Assistant Director Borelli's recorded comments expose a deeply troubling culture within Animal Services. In Carlsbad, they don't euthanize anything. I'm so sick of us keeping shit dogs that aren't going to get adopted. That's why we're overcrowded. Call me heartless, but I'm also realistic. I think many would agree these statements are heartless. This is not professionalism. This is cruelty and contempt towards those very animals the department is tasked, tasked with protecting. Where is the protection? This community deserves answers. There are many animal lovers who find this situation appalling and devastating. Why is
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Good morning. My name is Alavita Bella. I live in District Four. I'm here today heartbroken and outraged by the county's ongoing failure to protect the animals of San Diego. Another horse died this August on Artesian Road, the fourth horse to die under Supervisor Tara Lawson Remers' watch. How many more have to die before this county finally steps in and thirty, for years, residents and activists have reported cruelty and neglect tied to this location. Starving horses, animals suffering, crying for help and being ignored. Also, dogs in the county shelters are suffering, trapped in overcrowded, inhuman conditions without enrichment or proper care. These are not isolated incidents. They reflect a systemic, systemic failure of leadership within the Department of Animal Services. And it's not just us saying this anymore. Even the news have been reporting on these issues. At the center of all of this is Assistant Director Rachel Borelli, someone who has shown through her own words and actions that she's not qualified for the position and lacks basic compassion for the animals in her, in her care. In her own recorded message, she said, but somebody already said before that animals are basically shit. She said, um, this is not heartless. I'm also realistic. And this is not realism, but it's cruelty and contempt from some, someone entrusted with protecting the lives of these animals. We are demanding action today. Remove all the animals from the Artesian Road property. Launch an independent third-party investigation into Animal Services leadership and shelter conditions. Call Rachel Borelli accountable for her failures in her work. And finally, as the county supervisor, you have the power to investigate these reports and put political pressure on the district attorney's office to enforce California animal law, cruelty laws. Those laws are meaningless if they're never
Thank you. Your time is up. And Vice Chair Montgomery, step that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning. And again, all remaining speakers will be heard at the conclusion of today's session.
Thank you very much. We will now consider approval of the minutes from the Housing Authority meetings of September 30th, 2025 and October 21st, 2025. I will entertain a motion in a second at this time. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, we can go ahead and call the vote. All right.
And Vice Chair Montgomery, step that motion passes unanimously with all tenant commissioners who are present in voting high.
Thank you very much. We will now proceed to the formation of the consent agenda for today's meeting. All items on the consent agenda are routine and will be acted, acted upon with one motion. Individuals will be able to comment on the consent agenda after the supervisors pull the items that they would like to pull for discussion. Would any of my colleagues like to pull any items for discussion or have comments on the items on the consent agenda? Chair Proton McGarry? Okay, Supervisor Anderson? You don't need to pull. Okay, all right. I'll take a motion. Yeah, I'll take that. I, I would take that as a motion.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Desmond.
Yeah, nothing to pull. I just have a comment on item three. This is the, this, this item puts money towards or gets more money for San Diego County to add to the electrification of households to either replace existing appliances or make sure we put in electric appliances moving forward. But I, I wanted to stress that, you know, all this electrification is being pushed more and more by the state. But what about the grid? The grid, I think, is a very integral part of this process. And unfortunately, it's, I didn't see it mentioned in here. And already we're seeing issues, particularly with the hottest days of the month, with the grid's lack of capacity to keep up with electricity demands from EVs and, and air conditioning. If everyone had electric cars right now, we would, the grid just could not handle it. So I'm, I'll vote in favor because I know this is a good investment option here. We have to put down a little, a few dollars to get more from the state. But I want to see more emphasis on bolstering the grid moving forward. There's a lot in momentum with new nuclear technology, small modular reactants, fusion power, reprocessing spent fuel. Again, the grid's an integral part of this component and the effort. And we just can't electrify everything without having the capacity to deliver that energy. So that's all I have to say on that one. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. I will go ahead and second the consent agenda. And then we will now turn to public comment. Just want to remind the speakers, comments must be related to the items only on consent agenda. Those are items one through four. Ryan, please call the speakers.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery. We have nine total requests to speak on items on the consent agenda. One individual in person and eight requesting to speak by phone. For any individuals that request to speak on items on the consent agenda by phone, this is the time to call in. We will begin with the in-person speakers. I'd like to invite forward Caesar Javier. You'll have two minutes to address the board. And if you could please identify which items on the consent agenda you are speaking about as well.
Caesar and Purita with existing medical condition desirously wish to enjoy life postponing aging. We would like to lump all these four consent agenda in ourself, in our collective discussion. The legislative solution, a solution from a keyword ARASTI, meaning it must be available, responsive, adequate, simply timely, efficient and effective. This is delivery of public good. I am not competing with your intelligences, but we are here as part of problem solvers, thinkers. It's our duty. Process of rule crafting and implementing is always welcome. Why? Because of change. You know, population explosion, environmental denigration, et cetera, et cetera. Chair leader had declared it before Mom Steve. We have to act now. Nora Vargas has led the way. If we cannot tackle the job, step down. That's one solution. Number two, focus on the St. Juan River Valley crisis. It has begun since 1993 and the air pollution has only done investigation July 2024. You know that, Mom, no one represent, oh, the new member of the governing board. Is the APCD providing the EIR? Is the APCD owned by the city elected officials influenced by them? Air with breath, water we drink. They seem to control it. Too bad. Too bad. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that requested to speak by phone. Again, when it's your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted. You will hear recording that will tell you to begin your comments. And we will go ahead and begin with our first caller. Anne Riddle, you are our first caller. You may be muted on your end. Anne? Anne, I can hear your phone. It is your turn to speak if you'd like to give comments. Okay, Anne. Can't hear you, so we'll go ahead and go to our next caller.
Well, there's something going on with the call-in system. You guys really need to check it out because it was giving me messages that said there was some kind of system error and it was gonna hang up. It said it several times. It didn't wind up hanging up, but there's probably something going on that's causing that to happen. So I just wanted to let you guys know. But can you start my time over? Hello?
Please, please continue.
I don't get it. Okay. Yeah, so everything that you guys are doing, it's, it's like you are putting people in danger of, of not having electricity, like Jim was talking about. You know, trying to electrify everything and, and put people into electric vehicles has already put such a increase on the grid that it's not able to sustain it. And then we have things like you're bringing in a billion-dollar AI technology into the county and that takes exorbitant amount of energy just to run. And when you guys go in and you're putting things like smart meters in homes, that allows for, you know, the, the, the system to go ahead and say, well, you've used too much on the power grid. So we're gonna have to turn your power off, all at the sake of, you know, providing it for AI or the different electric vehicles that you guys are implementing. So everything that you guys do, you know, to save the planet, you basically sacrifice the people in the process of doing that. They are, you know, suffering, yet we're working on all, all of these different things that are, are gonna cause more suffering. I mean, if, if people don't have, you know, heat during the winter because the power grid is, is got too much, you know, being used or needed from it, you know, it's actually putting people in danger. So, you know, just like you're putting in roundabouts and not making fire evacuation something that are, you know, on top of your mind, yet we, you know, kinda gotta wait to see when things happen. So it's just really sad to see the things that you guys implement that have to do with the planet and saving it with
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go ahead and go to our next speaker.
I don't trust any of you guys to make decisions. A, none of your ideas are actually green. B, I believe Joel Anderson invokes the restraining order to get me thrown in jail on this
Sir, we paused your time. Please let us know what items you are speaking on. This is the consent agenda. There are four items. Please identify what items you are speaking on.
I am speaking on all the items because the actions that you have taken against me to silence me on fraud is a good indication that you do not work for the people and you work for someone else. Joel Anderson for trying to invoke the restraining order is a career example of
Okay, I paused your time again. You are off topic. So please identify the items you'd like to speak on. Other, otherwise you'll have to forfeit your time, unfortunately.
But
Justin, do you have any more comments?
You guys allow voter fraud. I sent you documentation. You are silencing me and that is why you should not
And Justin, the vice chair has acknowledged that you are continuing to be off topic. So you're forfeiting your time for this agenda item. We'll go to our next caller.
Hold. LA County Decarb, do not approve this scam. The basic plot is that the board's climate action plan directs the county to expand access to programs that will increase energy efficiency and electrification in unincorporated areas. But then the State Energy Commission chose LA County to run the state equitable building decarb program, direct install EBD program. It will decarbonize homes for the voluntary installation of energy-efficient appliances and upgrades directly to low-income households and under-resourced communities. The service provider is actually the so-called EBD Coalition, EBDC, a nonprofit org. So now instead of homegrown solution, the board wants to throw $500,000 LA's EBD in hopes that it will devote 25 mil to San Diego over LA. So after the equity rant about trying to keep county business in the county, the county would rather pay workers selected by LA County nonprofits watch our tax dollars as they leave the county. The MOU adds the county, LA will submit monthly invoices to San Diego County COSD for labor and expenses related to energy-efficient products linked work in additional unincorporated areas within COSD. We'll pay a lot to EBDC, the actual workmen for its tax service. Now that can find out the details after we spend millions and overload the grid. Emergency review. And all, is all of us, we make really worth it or?
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next speaker.
Christina Marquez with IBW Local 569. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Wow, there's some rough people here. So I'm speaking on item number three for the Equitable Building Decarbonization Program. So IBW 569 represents San Diego and Imperial Counties, as you all know, and we've been working diligently with the program managers. The grant came from the California Energy Commission and has been given to two fiduciaries, one in Northern California, one in Southern California. We're working with the one in Southern California. This will give work to local members in San Diego County, number one. Number two, this is a great opportunity for those that can't afford to get new equipment that will reduce the gas emissions in their house and, and home. So this is a great opportunity for San Diego community residents, and it will give our members, our union members, electricians who are skilled and trained, to do this work. This is a great opportunity. Please support this item number three. I appreciate your time. Thank you, county board of supervisors. You guys are fantastic. Have a great day.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
True slave. From Swallow here, local emergency review. I'm going to leave off where Paul was talking, touching base on. So it's nothing but another cycle of waste, abuse, and fraud disguised as action. Decades of studies, reports, committees, and political theater, yet the sewage is still spilling, and the air still reeks, and people are still getting sick. So, yeah, this is not a crisis being managed. This is definitely a crisis that's being milked. Millions in taxpayer money poured into studies instead of solutions. You had over four years since declaring the TJ River a public health crisis. And what do we have to show for it? More studies, more data, more letters, more excuses, and, yeah, going into 2026, this government still can't or won't pressure Mexico to take accountability. Instead, the county keeps extending the so-called emergency while funding endless projects that do absolutely nothing but enrich consultants and agencies pretending to help. You can play the blame game all you want, federal, state, cross-border, but the truth is simple. This county has been incompetent for decades, and it's the people who pay for it, not just with tax dollars, but with their health. Children breathing toxic air, families exposed to sewage, gases, wildlife poisoned, all while you keep pretending that another study will somehow clean up the river. An emergency, an emergency means you fix the problem, not keep voting to extend it. So enough with the charades and with wasting our money and, yeah, just your willful negligence is insane. And the fact that people are not holding you to the fire, it's just, it's crazy. I mean, their health is downhill.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
And I'll be speaking to item number one, and I want to thank the Traffic Advisory Committee and the Department of Public Works for their continued attention to safety in our backcountry communities. These areas like Alpine, Blossom Valley, and Hidden Meadows, they have narrow, winding roads and limited law enforcement presence. When speed limits are increased, it's critical that enforcement, resources, and public education follow. I want to bring to your attention a series for traffic safety, and that's marijuana impaired driving. With the rise in high potency THC and intoxicating hemp products, we're seeing more drivers testing positive for these substances after serious crashes. The impacts are dangerous, especially on our rural roads, where response times are longer, visibility is lower, and young drivers often are traveling to and from recreational areas. The backcountry is already seeing increases in retail pot sale traffic. And as you move forward, with the traffic advisory recommendations, I urge the county to integrate impaired driving prevention, including marijuana education and enforcement. Speed management and impaired prevention go hand in hand, and protecting our rural communities requires a comprehensive approach that includes data, enforcement, and especially education to keep all road users safe. Thank you.
Thank you, and we will try to go back to Anne for comments. If you can hear us, please go ahead and give us your comments. Again, your device might be muted on your side. All right, Anne, we cannot hear you, so we're going to go ahead and conclude public comment on the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you so much. So we do have a motion by Supervisor Anderson, and that has been seconded by myself for approval of the items on the consent agenda. Let's go ahead and vote. Supervisor Chair Protim Agiri, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple comments on a couple items. Very excited to support the MOU between the County of San Diego and L.A. County for the Equitable Building Decarbonization Program. We know that low-income households spend three times more of their, of their income on energy than higher-income households. Energy efficiency upgrades can reduce household utilities by 20% to 30%. Programs like this allow us to reduce housing costs while advancing our climate action plan through a policy that benefits both people and the planet. As we heard, it's also creating local jobs, which is very important. And to the question about the grid, STG&E has committed to net zero by 2045. They have actually published their Path to Net Zero, a decarbonization roadmap for California that explains the grid capacity for us to enter a decarbonization efforts. And then finally, regarding consent item four, the updated Village 13 proposal that is in progress represents a meaningful improvement over the previously approved plans. Some early proposed improvements that I really like are the nearly 300 acres of preserved open space, the all-electric construction and the net-zero energy design, the enhanced wildfire and evacuation safety measures, and the opportunities for additional density to meet our housing needs. As the project moves forward, I want to strongly encourage the developer to include affordable housing units in the project so that Chula Vista residents can live there at all income levels. And with that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And so now I think if there's nothing else, we can go ahead and vote.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Higgins, you didn't need to vote on that one. So that motion passes unanimously with the, with the supervisor who are present and voting aye.
All right. Thank you so much. So, speaking of, thank you, Commissioner Higgins, for being here with us. We will go on to item HA01. Noticed public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the financial repositioning of public housing units through the HUD rental assistance demonstration, section, section 18, small public housing authority blend conversion. Authorize the application for the financial repositioning, the transition of the public housing program to a project-based funding platform, the formation of one or more separate legal entities, the declaration of surplus land, and issuance of requests for proposals to partner with an affordable housing developer, and find that these are not projects defined in the state SEQA guidelines. I would like to hand the floor over to our county team for presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp and members of the Housing Authority, Board of Commissioners. The County Housing Authority administers the Housing Choice Voucher Program, the Public Housing Program, and several other rental assistance programs that serve more than 25,000 residents throughout our county. Today, we will be discussing an exciting opportunity to make our public housing program more sustainable for low-income families and seniors. Over the past several years, we have presented to this commission about financially repositioning our four public housing properties, including most recently in March of this year. After significant positive engagement with the residents, HUD, and the City of Chula Vista, where these properties are located, we are seeking final authority to proceed with converting our public housing program into another HUD revenue stream. This shift in funding mechanisms will bring us in line with other efforts underway by housing authorities across the country and ensure the properties will remain safe and affordable long-term for current and future residents. Joining me are David Astoria, Director, and Nick Martinez, Assistant Director of Housing and Community Development Services. I will turn it over to David.
Thank you, Dr. Kim, and good morning. The County Housing Authority owns and operates four public housing sites in the City of Chula Vista. In total, these sites contain 121 affordable units. One of these properties, Town Center Manor, serves low-income seniors and disabled households, while the other three are home to low-income households. Funding for ongoing operations and capital improvement needs are funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Public Housing Program. These properties were built between 1984 and 1992, and although the Housing Authority has been able to maintain them in good condition, there are ongoing improvements and upgrades that will need to be made in the coming years, as you would expect at properties of this age. Additionally, costs for items like utilities and insurance continue to increase. HUD recognizes funding provided under the Public Housing Program is not keeping pace with the increasing costs of operating and maintaining the public housing portfolio. To address this situation, nationwide, HUD is encouraging housing authorities to financially reposition or shift from public housing funding to more sustainable Section 8 project-based revenue streams. Housing authorities across the country are taking similar steps to reposition their public housing sites to more sustainable models, such as the model before the board today. If approved, today's actions will authorize the Housing Authority to convert the Public Housing Program through a process called Rental Assistance Demonstration/Section 8, Section 18, Small Public Housing Authority Blend, or RAD, Section 18 Small PHA Blend option. This conversion would shift the funding from these properties from public housing to Section 8 Project-Based Vouchers, or PBVs. Residents at the property will remain in their units, and their monthly rental cost, which is income-based, will remain the same. The benefit is that HUD provides funding for PBVs based on market rate rents rather than the insufficient public housing funding formula. Post-conversion, revenue is projected to increase from approximately $1.7 million per year to $4 million per year. This increase in revenue will help to keep the properties in good condition, to extend the long-term affordability of these sites, and provide families with opportunities and projections. I'll now turn it over to Nick to provide additional details about the process.
Thank you, David. The conversion process has several benefits. First, added revenue will enhance the county's ability to operate, maintain, and update the properties. The residents will not be impacted by the conversion and will remain in their units and continue to pay an affordable rent. Residents would also have an option to request a tenant-based voucher one year after conversion is complete, potentially opening opportunities for new residents. With the conversion, the properties will remain affordable for decades to come, preserving this important resource for future generations. To allow the Housing Authority to administer PBVs post-conversion, the Housing Authority will need to create a separate legal entity to assume ownership and management of the properties. The recommendation before you is to form a limited liability, liability company as a separate legal entity. Additionally, today's action declares the properties exempt surplus land and authorizes a request for proposal to identify potential affordable housing partner. These steps will allow the Housing Authority to enter a ground lease with the qualified partner to take over ongoing operations and complete subsequent renovations. To ensure resident and stakeholder voices were heard and considered, the Housing Authority team held six meetings this year with current public housing residents. Residents are aware of their rights and benefits of the conversion. Staff also coordinated closely with the City of Chula Vista, and City Council has provided a letter of support for the effort. For the public comment period, notices were sent via email to more than 134,000 recipients and posted in 10 local media publications. To date, there have been no comments received in opposition to the plan. Community and resident engagement will continue throughout the conversion process. I'll now turn it back to David.
Today, today's requested actions include: Find that today's actions are exempt from SEQA; authorize the application for repositioning of the public housing sites and once-approved transition to a project-based voucher model; adopt a resolution of the Board of Commissioners authorizing the application for repositioning; provide authority to establish an LLC as a separate legal entity and transfer ownership of these sites; declare the four public housing sites exempt from surplus property, and issue an RFP for an affordable housing partner; finally, hold this hearing to receive public testimony. This concludes staff presentation. We're available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're going to go ahead and go to public comment and then circle back to the board.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery Stapp. We do have nine total requests to speak, one individual in person, eight requesting to speak by phone. Also like to note for the record, we did receive one e-comment on this item, which was in favor. For any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll go ahead and begin with the in-person speaker. Like to invite forward Caesar Javier. You'll have two minutes to address the board.
We have to defend our sanity and well-being by commenting on this very agenda. In my experience as a CVES applicant, one of the evaluation aspect is reading comprehension. In this paragraph-like literature, it says three aspects: money juggling, other measures to generate money, and lastly, the aspect of EIR, which is the heart of SEQA. Why, why SEQA? Why not land use and planning? Why not California environment and land use? Why SEQA? Why SEQA? Air Pollution Control District has implementing guidelines of SEQA. Do we have in the county an implementing guideline on SEQA? You do not have to answer. You have to research on this, and we are helping you to understand that we know it. This is all matter of generating money, money, money from the public taxpayers, and from you, of course, because you are also paying taxes. I humbly ask you, as an elder, look at it, what is really the definition of the problem? Madam, help us by helping you. Thank you. Thank you, Uncle Sam.
Thank you. We will now hear from those that have requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Day to applaud the county's efforts to create more affordable housing. As you move forward, I urge the county to consider a policy requiring all affordable housing to be 100% smoke-free. We all have the right to breathe clean, smoke-free air, especially in our homes. My concern is that some populations can be disproportionately affected by tobacco and marijuana, second- and third-hand smoke, and are more likely to suffer the health consequences from exposure, especially for our children and seniors. In homes, second-hand smoke is drifting into surrounding units through windows, cracks in walls, ventilation, plumbing, electrical outlets. Third-hand smoke consists of the residue from tobacco or marijuana smoke left behind after smoking, and it builds up on all surfaces in our home. I urge the county to support a policy that favors smoke-free environments and would eliminate tobacco and marijuana smoke in affordable housing units. This policy will improve the quality of life and encourage healthy living. I appreciate your consideration on this relevant and important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Nice little picture of, you know, the possibilities and whatnot, but you're not, you know, showing the reality of the federal funding cuts that are happening, especially with HUD. So how do you actually plan on being able to implement this when that's taking place? It seems very negligent when you don't even address that in the presentation, because that is a significant factor in your ability to accomplish this project, yet you're totally omitting that type of information. And the problem is, is that there are federal funding cuts because of choices that counties like San Diego have made, especially even like with the SNAP benefits, with refusing to share data with the USDA in order to be able to get funding. So when you're doing that, it is showing that you are trying to keep, you know, the federal government from knowing what's been going on by giving, you know, illegal aliens all of these resources that should be going to the people. People wait on a list for HUD for decades. I mean, children will grow up before they're even able to access that type of a benefit because of the way the system works. It's intentionally flawed and intentionally doesn't work. You guys are intentionally negligent, and you're putting people at risk when you're sitting here, you know, virtue signaling like this is going to provide any kind of housing, when you're literally impeding your own ability for people to do that because of your choices of omitting information, keeping, you know, the data that would expose the fact that you guys have been giving these resources to people who shouldn't get them. And in your decision to do that, people are suffering, and so it's your fault that people are going to lose their housing. So you shouldn't even be putting this word when you know you can't mitigate that. It's really ridiculous, and it's very sad to see the type of things that you guys do when, you know, you have Kimberly sitting up there.
Thank you.
Good morning, full of bold substituting monthly HUDD vouchers for annual payments from HUDD sounds like a better way to pay for things like unexpected repair costs. And that sounds like it would be money winner for the county, too. Moreover, given the current federal game of funding stuff, as little as possible, like half-funding SNAP, monthly funding makes more sense. But I hope we're not funding illegals. And, you know, because of all the financial stuff going on with feds, I would advise caution before finalizing this. You know, make sure HUD has the ability to pay for even the vouchers, that sort of thing. But otherwise, this sounds okay. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Okay, Conswallow here. Okay, so, you know, after listening to the caller who wanted to ban smoking in the HUD housing, I got to thinking, maybe we should also ban something even more dangerous: Big Pharma prescription drugs. Because, you know, each year, over 100,000 Americans die from pharmaceutical drug exposure, and some estimates link up to 882,000 annually.
Conswallow, we're pausing your time. This is HA1, so I'm just asking you to stay on topic. Thank you.
I am on topic. You didn't interrupt her. You didn't interrupt her, sister.
That's your first warning. Please stay on topic, or else I'll have to forfeit your time. Thank you.
You didn't interrupt her. Equality, remember? Okay. So if we're really talking about safety, maybe HUD should require all residents to swear off their pills before moving in, you know, for public health, because after all, smoking a cigarette on your porch is risky. Imagine the side effects in your medicine cabinet. Of course, this is satire, but the point is serious. Real freedom means making your own choices. Stop micromanaging people and start fixing the system that keeps them sick, dependent, and controlled on substances like marijuana and cigarettes. Done. Micromanaging, Monica.
We will go to our next caller.
Good morning. My name is Becky Rapp, and I appreciate the discussion surrounding affordable housing as it is essential for San Diego County. It's important that housing opportunities meet our regional needs, and as these new communities are designed and approved, it's vital that we also consider the health and safety of families and children who live there. A recent study published in the Journal of American Medical Association found that children living in homes where marijuana is smoked are five times more likely to have detectable marijuana in their urine. This is alarming, as marijuana smoke contains many of the same carcinogens as respiratory irritants found in tobacco smoke. Children are especially vulnerable to these toxic effects, and for many, the home, a place meant to provide safety and security, may be where the greatest risk lies. Exposure to marijuana smoke in home can lead to long-term respiratory problems, developmental concerns, and even increased cancer risks. That's why I urge the county to incorporate smoke-free multi-unit housing requirements into any affordable or county-funded development. This small but powerful policy would prevent second-hand smoke exposure, reduce health disparities, and align with our county's goals for sustainable wellness and equity. Thank you.
Thank you. We will go to our final caller.
I guess I'm calling in for a colleague who, when they saw the Housing Authority item on the agenda, wanted to share her perspective, particularly at a proposal you're looking at.
Ann, I'm going to pause your time. According to the Board rules, we can't yield time, so these comments have to be your own. So you can't call in for a colleague? The colleague we need to call in for themselves.
Oh, well. Let me rephrase that. Several of us colleagues wanted to share this comment today, so I'm just sharing it.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay. The reason why I say is that I signed up to speak to this item, but I put down her email, but I put down my phone number, because there are a group of us who work in this program and care a great deal about our young people's health. But anyway, we were excited by the prospect that you're looking at regarding Section 8 vouchers. We have watched the after-school programs used, and many of them are waiting in line for Section 8 vouchers. And what you're suggesting is very valuable to them, and I just wanted to share how it is that our very vulnerable populations are generally the ones most exposed to unhealthy air, and some of the speakers have identified second-hand smoke. What came up in a conversation yesterday at one of the programs is something called third-hand smoke, and one of our elementary school students asked us about it, and we explained that it was the seepage of second-hand smoke into furniture and rugs and toys and that sort of thing. They understood immediately, they, what it was like to walk into a place where there had been a previous smoker. So some of the suggestions you have, suggesting that a ban on second-hand or any smoking in any of the properties that the county's in charge of is really significant for...
Thank you. Your time is up. Ann, Vice Chair Montgomery-Steph, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, let's go over to Chair Protem McGary.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick clarifying question. First, I want to appreciate your work that you did to educate the community and to gain support, but just for the public awareness, the residents that are currently housed in these buildings will have a seamless transition, correct? They're not going to be put at the back of the line for the Section 8 or anything like that?
That's correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that very clear. So, thank you. Thank you for that. I think this is about protecting deeply affordable housing, especially for families, the disabled, and seniors. This item allows us to begin making long overdue improvements, such as repairing the major building systems, roofs, walkways, parking areas, and other deferred maintenance that directly impacts the resident's health and comfort, so this is extremely important, especially in my district where housing insecurity and cost burdens are especially high. We have a responsibility to preserve every affordable unit we have and to ensure those units remain safe, stable, and dignified. So we will have the opportunity to discuss this work and additional ideas for policy at our Housing Forward workshop on November 19 that I'm very much looking forward to. And I also just, for the awareness of some of the public speakers that called in, according to the United States Government Code, Title 42, Section 1436, makes it very clear that undocumented immigrants are not eligible for Section 8 vouchers. So I figured they might have not been aware about our laws in this country. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just want to say that I think preserving affordable housing is just as important as building it, sometimes even more. And so, thank you for this work in finding creative ways to preserve affordable housing. And this item does need a motion, so I will go... Okay. Chair Protem has moved the item. Can I? I will second it. If there's no further discussion, we can go ahead and vote.
Ann, Vice Chair Montgomery-Steph, that motion passes unanimously with all tenant commissioners who are present in voting aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you so much for your work in the presentation. We'll resume at this time with non-agenda public comment. Ryan, please call the remaining individuals that requested to speak.
Thank you, Vice Chair Montgomery-Steph. We still have 21 speakers requesting to speak, all via phone. So for those that have requested to speak by phone, if you could please dial into the conference line now using those instructions that were provided to you, and we will go ahead and begin with our first caller.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Cherry Ann Skelly. I'm a parent and a community volunteer with school programs that serve youth, especially those in need. Since we're already two months into school, we volunteers are beginning to understand the needs of our young people. We know that schools are dealing with bullying by students to each other, sometimes the reason behind school poor attendance. And there are other indications of mental health struggles of these students, including threats of violence and the most severe form of mental health struggles: student suicide. Personal and mental health resources have been written more robustly into school districts' budgets. It would be wonderful if volunteers who work daily on our campuses could more easily supply suggestions referencing the priorities for children, youth, and families in county planning and policymaking. One suggestion: We need enforcement of the county's policies, for example, against tobacco stores, vape shops, and marijuana storefronts who sell flavored products, which is against your laws and the state to truly protect youth. So no additional businesses in our back country that sell alcohol, tobacco, vaping products, or marijuana. Students need clear messages from all levels of the county government regarding how best to handle problems that are not short-term solutions. An example of a message: Drugs are never the answer. Not alcohol, not tobacco, not vaping, not marijuana, or abuse of prescription drugs. Now more than ever, we need the county to make a commitment to our youth. Thank you for hearing my concerns this morning.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
I'm here today to speak about the county's draft marijuana ordinance, which is expected to come before you as early as January. This report will shape the future of marijuana cultivation and retail sales across San Diego County, and it's critical that decisions are made based on a full understanding of community impact, especially those affecting our backcountry residents. The recent Planning Commission meeting, the draft PEIR was presented, and it became evident that many commissioners have not read the detailed analysis prepared by our community planning groups. That was alarming. These reports are not casual opinions. They are fact-based assessments from residents who know the backcountry firsthand. They understand the fire risks, the water limitations, access challenges, and potential impacts on community character and safety. Another concern raised during the meeting was that the Sheriff's Department has not yet provided an official statement on the draft PEIR. This is crucial information. Law enforcement input is essential when evaluating public safety, cultivation enforcement, and resource needs. Moving forward without that perspective would be premature and irresponsible. Our planning groups are the boots on the ground. They know the backcountry. It's their country. Their research, along with the sheriff's insight, must be fully considered before any policy decisions are made. I urge each of you to educate yourselves before the staff presentation. Truly understand the concerns and respect the hard work that community members have put into protecting our rural areas. They are not industry stakeholders. They are real people living in the backcountry, dedicated to preserving the safety and the character of their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Honey, non-public comment. Good morning, Supervisor Palomar Aguirre. I am your voting constituent. Another horse has died on Artesian Road, the fourth under the Board of Supervisors' watch. Four innocent lives lost, and still this county looks the other way. How many more must die before you act? This is not an oversight. This is cruelty. Assistant Director Rachel Borelli called shelter dogs shit dogs, as you've heard. Deputy CAO Andrew Strong allegedly lies, denies, and gaslights the public, and this board stands silent while animals suffer and die. Every cover-up only strengthens us. The more you hide the truth, the louder we will rise. The more you deny, the fiercer we will fight. You can end this now. Remove Andrew Strong, remove Vaughn Maurice, remove every animal from Artesian Road, and restore humanity to this county. Silence is complicity. Cruelty is not leadership. Justice cannot wait. The time for action is now, not tomorrow, but now. We've been doing this fight for over two years, and it's just exhausting. Please help the animals. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Susanna Alexander. I'm calling again about the animal cruelty and neglect on Artesian Road. It is not the first time that I have called about this. For years, activists and residents have reported the cruelty and abuse and neglect tied to this property, and the county's ongoing, complete inaction hasn't allowed suffering to continue. These failures are not isolated incidents. They represent a systematic neglect and leadership failure within the Department of Animal Services and county oversight. This is not professionalism. It's cruelty and it's contempt toward the very animals the department is tasked to protect. The county board must stop trying to cover this up. The public sees the truth. The animals are suffering and dying, and leadership is protecting itself instead of protecting lives. The community... The community deserves answers. Why does the San Diego County Board of Supervisors continue to enable and support animal abuse through inaction and denial? We demand, we demand an immediate removal of all remaining animals from Artesian Road property and sent to a sanctuary approved by activists. A third-party investigation, independent investigation into animal services and leadership and shelter conditions should also be provided. And accountability from Supervisor Tara Lawson Remmer and the county board for the repeated, repeated failures to act. It's time to lead through compassion. Animals have feelings. They have no voices. Who will be their voices if not ours? Does anyone care? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
My name is Madison, and I'm here on behalf of families in our unincorporated communities who do not want to see more marijuana shops in our neighborhoods. Recent science gives us every reason to be cautious. A major systematic review of 99 studies covering more than 220,000 participants and published in the Annals of Internal Medicine found that today's high THC cannabis products, including vapes, dabs, and concentrates, are not the marijuana of the past. THC levels in vape devices can reach 70% to 90% THC. These high potency products are directly linked to psychosis, schizophrenia, and addiction, sometimes appearing after only brief use. More than half of the studies in that review found that high THC products worsen anxiety and depression, and three-quarters link them to cannabis use disorder, a pattern of dependence that harms mood, motivation, and daily functioning. These risks are especially serious for youth. When marijuana storefronts increase, so does access and normalization. Young people, whose brains are still developing, are the most vulnerable to psychosis, hallucinations, and long-term mental health damage. Parents in our unincorporated areas are deeply concerned. We do not want to repeat the mistakes made with tobacco when marketing and easy availability created generations of addiction and illness. The bottom line is, expanding marijuana retail in our unincorporated communities will not create safer neighborhoods. It will create more risk, especially for kids. Please reject any effort to expand marijuana shops in these areas. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
I get that county supervisors have a lot on your plates currently due to the antics of our federal government, combined with local financial deficits. But, please imagine that you were abandoned and couldn't make your needs known. You were relieved to be dropped off at a place that shelters you, feeds you, and takes care of some of your basic needs. You think that the Director of the Department of Animal Services is looking out for your interests, but you soon realize she doesn't like you or any of your fellow non-humans. You suddenly panic. You feel betrayed. Dogs in the county shelter have been betrayed by Rachel Borelli. But county supervisors have also been betrayed. You all put your trust in Borelli and learned that she's only in her position for the salary. She doesn't have empathy for stray dogs, and her poor attitude has caused morale to tank and staff to leave. Her boss Vaughn Maurice made a poor hiring decision, and you have been taking the heat. I implore you to fire Borelli and hire a competent, empathetic director who appreciates companion animals and will uphold the board's values.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
This is Peggy Walker. I'm a health educator, and I want to address that EIR that was presented at the Planning Community, at the Planning Commission meeting recently. It was addressed earlier by another speaker. This EIR review was disappointingly a clear example of refusal to acknowledge the harms and risks of marijuana expansion into our rural areas. No effort was made to address the EIR's flaws or environmental hazards, including intensive water use, chemical hazards, or odor issues destructive to quality of life that have led to lawsuits in other counties. And not a single presentation on expansion has ever been made to address marijuana's destructive effects, especially on those under 26. No mention made of horrific child poisoning, teen addiction, the vaping crisis, IER admissions for cannabis use disorder, or the potency of the lottery may not highly addictive strength. These things affect the communities in the environment in which we live. No mention its made of hikes in adolescent psychotic disorders where dispensaries are allowed of marijuana impaired driving or linked to cardiovascular death, suicide, even chromosomal defects in human egg cells, diabetes, or testicular and oral cancers. Those are just a fraction of marijuana-related health issues, and they affect, according to studies, vulnerable black and Hispanic communities on a higher level where they endure greater health impacts from dispensaries in their neighborhoods. Marijuana is legal, we're told, but legal does not mean safe. An appellate judge addressing a Santa Barbara lawsuit on cultivation there reminded that marijuana remains federally illegal.
Thank you. Your time is up. We'll go to our next caller.
Supervisors, this is Anne Riddle. I too want to address the recent Planning Commission meeting. So many of us up here in the North County traveled down to this meeting to speak of our concerns. Our planning groups spoke about the reports that they wrote that they had hoped that the Planning Commission and staff would read. They are long, they are well thought out, they're bright, and they truly reflect what these county residents know about the land where they live and have lived, and sometimes in cases, families have lived. It has been exciting to watch them put into words what they know. They bring a wealth of education and experience, these planning group members, and they are worried. They're worried that no one listens to them. And one of the concerns they had is that they hadn't had much contact with the planning department. And when they call code enforcement, they don't get responses that they think are necessary to them and the safety of their family. I think that we need to review how our staffing has the capacity. We think they may have the enthusiasm to do their job, but is there enough of them? Do they have the capacity? Is the organizational structure there and code enforcement to respond? Those planning groups express that concern because they haven't seen it on other issues. And they are concerned that if marijuana cultivation comes to their beautiful landscape, that there'll be no one to talk to about anything that goes amiss. They don't want it, but they would like a responsive county structure for any problems that should arise. Do we need to relook at our responsiveness to the county backcountry residents? They surely seem to feel they need it. Thank you for letting me express what happened at the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Your time is up. We will go to our next speaker.
And all life exploitation and suffering that happens in San Diego County is so egregious, especially when all you guys do is try and protect the system. The case of Arabella further proves the negligence within the child welfare system, that it is a cradle-to-grave human trafficking organization that takes place. No child should die because of negligence of the county and others who are supposed to be mandated reporters that refuse to do their job and ensure that children are safe. San Diego County for decades has been engaged in this child abuse and child trafficking from cradle to grave. In fact, instead of making sure that abuse doesn't happen, you guys actually engage in it. When there is abuse, you hide it. When there isn't, you create it and try and have children tell the agency that their own father raped them when they know it was somebody else that went through a window. Yet this agency was trying for a very long time to get this little girl to admit that her father raped her when she knew that it was not him. They had his DNA and could have tested it against that, but yet they further continue to try and force this square peg into a round hole. You guys have been continuing to hide the sexual abuse of Malaika and Zaya Robinson that has been reported. You guys refused to do an investigation or a forensic interview, which leads to things like Arabella's death when she was starved to death, 48 pounds at 11 years old and had 13 fractures that had been unhealed, that could have been mitigated by all of the people that she crossed paths with that should have done their job and failed to do so. This is showing the systemic intentional negligence that continues to take place that you guys refuse to mitigate. No other child should have to die because you guys are negligent and intentionally trafficking children while omitting the...
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
Hey, my name is Sally Hito, and I'm a 30-year California resident. I graduated Grossmont College. My parents and grandparents were active in the computer community. My grandfather designed the Civic Theater. And I just tell you all that to tell you that I love San Diego and I have a very big interest in things going on there. And I just found out about the heartbreaking animal suffering and neglect going on at Artesian Road. This is my first time calling in about it. And from what I understand, you've been notified many times about horses and dogs there suffering, starvation, and neglect, and that animals have died. And this is just so distressing to me, I had to call in. So, you know, I make my living as a musician, but I spend almost all my spare time trying to help others, and I'm not paid for this. I just really believe that we need to help the most vulnerable among us, and truly animals are often the most vulnerable among us. And I just can't even comprehend what I've learned about animal service failing to step in and you failing to step in, frankly. Yeah, animal cruelty is so time-sensitive, and if I had your power, I would go out there today and I'd remove the animals and bring them to a safe place. And I don't have your power. And the animals rely on you only to help them. And so, I guess the power I do have is I'll just be telling as many people as possible about what I've learned. I will keep calling in. I'm going to tell other people to call in. It sounds like you've got a lot of people talking about this issue, so please, please rectify this immediately. Thank you so much for hearing my message.
Thank you. We'll go to the next caller.
This is Vikram Chikara, and I would like to bring your attention again to the suffering and exploitation of animals within the county. As you've heard, yet another horse has died on Artesian Road. Many more horses have died recently due to neglect and abuse at the ranch. I'm requesting for the county to intervene and remove all animals from this property. Dogs continue to remain in inhumane conditions at the county shelters. Overcrowding, lack of enrichment, and failure to provide basic welfare standards is a violation of the county's duty to protect animals in its care and is leading to immeasurable suffering in shelters. Overcrowding and euthanization will continue to be a problem for as long as breeding is legal in any form. Licensed breeding is licensed exploitation of dogs who never asked to be treated like toys, eventually to be discarded and caged in 25-square-feet cells for most of their day before being euthanized. I call on the board to take a serious look at the legality of breeding as well as enforcing an outright ban on the import of domesticated animals. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
I am forgiving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Dora Fahim, president and founder of Los Angeles Alliance for Animals. I'm here to express my deep concern for the suffering of animals in San Diego County, and I want this on record. This board has known about these abuses for over a year and continues to do nothing meaningful to stop them. Another horse has died on Artesian Road, the fourth. Four deaths, countless warnings, endless excuses. How many more? Horses are the fabric of our history and our humanity. Yet here they die neglect while this board turns away. Dogs languish in overcrowded shelters under Deputy CAO Andrew Strong, who has misled the public and protected cruelty instead of stopping it. And it was Andrew Strong who hired Rachel Borelli after severe concern was expressed that she has no shelter management experience. Here's how Rachel Borelli feels about shelter animals.
Yeah, but in Carl's words, they don't euthanize anything, even if the dog fucking bit a kid. So that's why I was like euthanize the dog. Like, I'm so sick of us keeping shit dogs that aren't going to get adopted. That's why we're overcrowded. I mean, heartless, but I'm also realistic.
Silence is complicity. Cruelty is cowardice. Justice for animals is not optional. It's the only option on the table and the only path forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll go to our next caller.
My name is Kathleen Lippett, and I participate in several planning groups in unincorporated communities, and I'd like to express concern why the county seems to continue to disenfranchise them from their right to have a say in what happens on their land. When Governor Newsom refused to fund Prop 36, the losers were not just those who might have benefited from treatment, but the voters who once again were betrayed by their state and county governments circumventing the will of the voters. The failure of this board to own and its own public health department to provide the public messages that would have stemmied the tide of ever-increasing number of those in need of treatment is a dereliction of your responsibilities. When all the harmful impacts of a policy have gone wrong, have continued to go in that direction, there's little doubt that the county, that is the county's intent. It is insulting to the public that the county believes that the epidemic of marijuana harms will or can be mitigated via harm reduction and treatment. Your marijuana policies have fueled every behavioral social harm you claim to care about. The recipe for increasing drug abuse and addiction was handed to you by Nathan Fletcher and his marijuana industry buddy. It relies on availability, easy access, a low perception of risk, normalization of youth, ignoring all of its harms, and indifference to the harmful impacts upon children, young adults, and the environment. The county's strategy is no different from any for-profit addiction industry. Worse, is the county's bias in favor of cities, densely populated cities, over rural, unincorporated residents. This reflects an ongoing disenfranchisement of your rural communities, and it needs to stop. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Montgomery, that concludes the request for non-agenda public communication this morning.
Okay, thank you so much, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
The next regular meeting of the board will take place on November 18.